Twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve is now called to order. A roll call, Mrs. Bittner, please.
Mayor Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Ploton McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Tease?
Here.
Former president, we have the discussion item, City Manager Zerlik.
Thank you, your honor, and members of council. At the last council meeting, I was asked to come back with two items. One being a possible list of qualified individuals for acting city manager. The second would be a methodology to secure a recruitment firm to hire a full-time manager. In terms of the acting city manager, council really has three choices. They can go in-house and select someone. They can select someone that has experience in Troy that is no longer here, that's retired. Or they can select someone that has no experience in Troy that's still a qualified administrator. That choice is totally up to you. In terms of in-house applicants, I neither solicited nor precluded anyone from approaching me to see if they wanted to become the interim city manager. The only person who contacted me was Mr. Mark Miller, the Director of Community Development. And prior to his position as director, he was an assistant city manager to me, in charge of the Service Division. Based on the ICMA restructuring model, I was asked to re-employ that position to a director. Mark also included his resume. If council decides that they would rather have someone that would have experience in Troy but no longer works here, I did contact two individuals. One is Mr. Gary Shripka, and Gary was a chief building instructor for almost twenty years and also assistant manager in charge of the Service Division when I was city manager first time. Mr. Shripka retired and has since then been an interim city manager for the city of East Point. Mr. Mike Culpepper also worked for the city of Troy. He was a public works director here in Troy. Left Troy, went to Auburn Hills to become public works director, and was then promoted to city manager of that city. Mike is now retired, so is Mr. Shripka. Both of these gentlemen indicated that for a short term, they would act in the capacity of interim city manager should the council desire. Thirdly, the Michigan Municipal League has a website of interim city managers, and these are either retired managers or managers in transition that have expressed an interest in being a part-time administrator. I should know that, or let you know that, both Mr. Shripka and Mr. Culpepper have indicated that they have no interest in being a full-time city manager. So, that said, the choice is up to the governing body.
Now, at this point, do we have discussion?
Please.
Is there any comments from the council? Councilman Fleming?
Yeah. I've been through this twice. It's very difficult. It's probably the most important thing this council does, is to select the city manager, interim city manager first. I appreciate, personally, I appreciate Mr. Miller submitting his resume, and very, very good resume, and his willingness to take on that position, because that's extra responsibility. So, Mark, thank you for doing that. My personal opinion is, you're loading. And even though you said you can offload some to Mr. Lynn Dan, I thought that was a good recommendation. I personally think with what we're going through, and it's going to take months to accomplish this, I think with the skeleton crew that we've got in the city now, that's probably stretching you even thinner than you already are. So, personally, I'm not ready to just say we recommend that now. But as far as, I really thank you for being willing to do it, Mark, and taking the initiative to step out and say, "If you're in a bind, I'll help you." So, thank you for that. But I really think you're, it's actually overloading you if we accept that.
Councilman Slater?
Well, I'd like to echo that. I know Mark does an excellent job at what he does, but because of the streamlining that we've done here in the past years, we've kind of set the organization to the point where we don't have an assistant city manager anymore. And to throw that on one person, I think, would be too much. I certainly appreciate the offer also, but I think, I think it would be best that we find somebody that can specifically do that duty and let Mark still continue to do the fine job that he's doing. And having said that, I think it's, from my perspective, imperative that we have somebody in place that has experience with the city, that has been part of the operation, that knows the ins and outs of how this particular city operates. So, from my perspective, I'm willing to move quickly from internal to somebody outside and possibly discuss somebody that, at least for the three months that we have until we find a permanent, it just seems it would take that long for somebody that's never been here to get their foot in the door and know what's going on here. So, I think we should personally just move quickly to talk about that.
Mayor Ploton McGinnis?
I have a couple of comments. And one, I think, I also appreciate you stepping forward and presenting us with all the information. And I think it's important that we really differentiate between the interim city management conversation versus a city manager. And I think once we get to the point where we decide what process we're going to use to find our permanent city manager, that we should encourage anyone that works in the city that decides that they want to apply for that job and go through that process. We would encourage that. But I think the key point is, right now, that each of our departments are a very fine balance, and they each have to do something very important for us, obviously. Our big focus now, after we've restructured, is to really work on that economic development piece, and that's kind of been our focus. So, I would be really concerned about taking the head of that department and somebody that does such a great job at that department, and removing them for even a short period of time, because that's really where our focus is supposed to be going forward. And then, on the flip side, we got the list of people that said that they would be interested on MML, and there's a huge variety there. I think that the piece that we would be lacking while we're sitting at the table coming up with an interim city manager is what we'll hopefully have going forward to find our permanent city manager, which is the background, the really in-depth look that we'll be able to take over the course of two or three months at each of those candidates. So, not that those people on that list are not qualified, but I think it would be really difficult for us as a group and the tools that we have to really go through each one of those people, to scan them like we would our city manager. And then, once we have figured out who would be appropriate, to really train them and get them acclimated. I just think time is really of the essence. So, I would have some concern doing that and taking the time that we would really need to do that, even if it's only for three months. That's three months that we really can't afford to make a wrong decision. So, I would personally be in favor of considering somebody that has some familiarity with Troy, so we don't have to bide our time between the city management search and all the time that we're going to put in, and then also training a new person, asking our staff to do the same. You know, I think that that might put us at a disadvantage, so...
Any other comments from the council?
So, are you saying that you don't want to go to MML for a, for an interim? Because I've looked through all the resumes. I'll get people there, but you're right, they have no experience here in Troy.
No experience, and I just think that if you, I know we all got information about kind of the process, and I know we'll talk about it. What is this process we're going to embark on to find a new city manager? And I know we haven't decided, but when we look at some of the things that are recommended, it's very in-depth, and it's really looking to find a match, whether it's experience, all the things that we're going to talk about that we think are important qualities, that we think the community thinks is important for them to have. And I just feel like, taking that list of people, even though they're somewhat free-screened, you know, the ability to really feel like we know them well enough to make that decision and that they know our community, I'm not really sure if we have the time to do that, really. And, you know, I think that that could be a positive or negative for some of those candidates, because you reviewed a lot of the names that are there, and I reviewed a lot of the names. And on my own investigative, you know, journey that I took over the few days that we had that, there were some things on there that I thought that looked great, that may not really be great. Some things that I thought did not look great, when in reality shouldn't preclude them from maybe having that spot. So, I just really didn't feel comfortable with the fact that I know we need to make a decision. You know, hopefully, we can come to a consensus tonight or in the very near future. I think the community needs that. I think the staff needs that. The more we kind of let this hang out there, I think the more we're setting people up for, you know, concern and that uncertainty that we're really trying to get away from. And I just didn't feel comfortable taking those names and with the tools that we have to really go out and make that decision. I don't know how, if anyone else thought that way. I felt that in some ways that could disqualify someone that might be an eligible candidate or in other ways, you know, not give us enough information. I don't know how everyone else feels. I know we have HR department that's going to help us screen, but in terms of making a decision, going through those names right here, I don't know how everyone else really feels. But I'm not sure that we have enough tools to do that.
All resumes look good. I've never seen a bad resume. But it leaves us with a very limited number of people we're looking for who have the experience here. Right now, it looks like we got maybe three people. Unless we're going to expand that list. And how do we expand that list?
I'm pleased that Manager Zerlik gave us the two choices that we have. I think it would be important for us to interview those two gentlemen. And on the recommendation of Manager Zerlik, I think that to avoid spending a lot of time, as you say, diverting our attention from focusing on the long-term manager process that we need to take, I think it would be really appropriate that we choose one of those two people. When do you think they might be available to interview with us?
I would be able to contact them tonight and hopefully Monday.
And how would that process work?
Very simple. It would be an open meeting, obviously. And you could schedule twenty minutes to half an hour with each individual, and just to get to know them. Because I can see where there, there may be some trepidation, because many of you don't know these individuals, and you'd like to at least speak to them before making a decision. And you could bring them both in and decide who you have the best chemistry with. Because the way, the way it shakes out essentially is that, even when you hire a full-time manager, they're all going to be qualified. It's just a matter of the individual that you think you'll get along best with and has the best fit for the needs of the organization. You might get a sense of that in a short interview with both Mr. Shripka and Culpepper, just so that you get to know them, know their history. And again, from my perspective, a benefit of bringing someone as an interim manager that has experience in Troy is that they know the community, they know the major stakeholders, they know the employees, and they would take less time, if you will, finding their way around than someone that would come in on an interim basis and not know anyone or what's going on. Because the interim manager, I look upon that similar to what you would call a substitute teacher. They're not, they're not going to do great things here. They're going to be more of a gatekeeper. You know, you might tell them that the first day Big Beaver Road is just out there, and when they leave, you expect Big Beaver Road to still be out there, something to that effect. But, you know, they will manage the organization on a day-to-day basis.
I also like the fact that neither of them expressed any interest for the long-term position. We don't have to worry about juggling that responsibility and maybe hurting somebody's feelings. It's kind of cut and dry. We know that they're going to be here for three or four months, and we know that they come with good recommendations. So, I'm, I would be in favor of doing that, taking the time before our budget meeting on Monday to interview both gentlemen and make our decision at that time.
Can I ask just one question? On the, the other list of folks, all of those people on that list have zero interest in becoming full-time manager at one point.
Not necessarily. Okay. I can't respond to that.
Okay, so, you know, I understand all the points, and they're all great points, and I tend to side with all of that. But if we opt for the other, and that individual might be interested in a long-term position, it may be an opportunity on a short-term basis to try to test drive a manager. So, you know, I don't want to discount that feature as well.
Councilman Tease?
I think, I think, all right, I want to address two, two issues. Earlier this week, all of the city council members received an email from one of the department heads. And, and that's been addressed in a note today on the table. But I think, want to make it clear to department heads and to our employees, it's a council manager from government, and that we see it that way and operate in that way. You know, trying to do an end-around directly to the council isn't how it's set up. And I think we need to make that clear now. So, when we have the new city manager in here, to understand that we're 100% behind the new city manager, and part of our responsibility is to watch their back and treat them with respect, so that the employees understand that as well. That said, that certainly didn't affect my thinking about your application. I really appreciate it. And, and where my head's at is, I think, we do need to have someone from the outside. I like the idea of having someone with some experience from, from the city, so they know folks' name starting on day one, and also they can somewhat seamlessly keep, keep the ball rolling. And so, that's, that's kind of where my head's at. And I don't, we could certainly do some type of interview. I don't know how much we would learn in twenty minutes, other than hear the tone of their voice and the look in their eye. And so, if we want to do that, I'm fine with that. And we can make a decision that night and put this to bed.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. I, just to address Councilman Henderson, giving somebody an opportunity to come in, I don't, I don't think that's the way that we want to do this process. I think we want to do a real thorough search and spend a good three months or better to do a thorough search. As Mr. Zerlik said, we're just looking for somebody to keep the ship going down downstream for three months while we make that very, very important decision. I don't really need to interview either one of these gentlemen. I know them both very well. They're both very good candidates, good people, well-respected. So, I'll be happy to join you, but I know, I know both of these gentlemen very well, and they're, I think, very good recommendations to help us through this.
Mayor Ploton McGinnis?
And here's, and my other, this is my other fear, I guess, of putting someone in that spot. And I went through the resumes, and a couple of those people that are on their list have been repeatedly interviewing in other cities around us very recently. So, I know that they're looking for a permanent job, and that's great. And I would have, I would really happily hope that they apply once we put in place how we're going to look for our permanent manager. I think that that would be good. I definitely want the safeguards that I'm hoping we'll put in place in terms of that search. But I'm just leery. We've got so much transition that's happening right now. And I think that we would run the risk of putting someone in there on an interim basis, which we won't have the ability to really do as much of the digging that we will for the permanent one. And then, they have that step-up or it's a showcase to prove something, show us what they can do. And I have to be honest with you, I don't want anyone to do that right now. I just want, you know, keep going in a forward-moving path, you know, keep everybody looking ahead in the future type thing, and let us make that decision, and we do the hard work. Obviously, we're going to finish up a budget, and then we can pretty much devote the summer to this process. So, I would really be looking for somebody that maybe doesn't want to use as that, as an opportunity to kind of have that advantage, to really show us all the things they're capable of doing. That makes me a little nervous. So, that was, that was one of the things that really led me to think that we would want somebody in there that doesn't necessarily want to find that as their permanent job. It could go either way. It could go great. You could put somebody in that position, and they could absolutely shine, and we would be sold. But I think running the risk that, you know, it really becomes a showcase, and maybe other people that are applying, especially if they're employees of the city, see that person as having an unfair advantage because they're in that. I just am really hoping that we can do this in a way that will rock the boat as little as possible. So, that's kind of what I was hoping for.
Councilman Tease?
Just coming full circle, I concur with what the majority's saying here. I think initially, I thought we needed to go through the MML. You were going to ask me a week ago. I've gone through those resumes like probably all of you have, and there's some very qualified people there. But I think for all the reasons stated here tonight, I'm comfortable for this interim basis to look at these two, and hopefully, we're going to be able to make a decision, a unanimous decision on one of these, because I think that's important, too, that we come together. And Mr. Zerlik, you're right, this is a gatekeeping function. And it's a very important function to keep things moving forward. But I'm comfortable with that at this point. Let's bring these two in on Monday. Hopefully, we can make a decision a set of time in this. If we get it done and move on with the more important thing, that's finding the... And I concur, if someone on staff wants to put their name in the, and go through that process, that's, that's fine with me, too.
So, I think we've all come to an agreement that that's what we're going to do on Monday?
Okay.
Manager Zerlik?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, just, are you going to call a special meeting then, mayor, for, for the purpose of doing those interviews? And then, you'd also need to indicate what time that's going to be, and I'm sure our city clerk would be happy to help out with preparing that documentation, but...
I'm thinking an hour before, six-thirty?
We should do six, so we have that time to transition, if you're available. Oh, I'm available. I just don't need that much time to transition. But that's okay.
We do six.
Six is fine. Six is fine.
I tend to answer too many questions, so...
Okay, that's good.
Thank you. What I'll do, and I need to apologize first to staff, because I don't have their phone numbers, but it would be great if you could contact Mike Culpepper and Gary Shripka to see if they can make it here at six and six-thirty respectively. Beth Taschek has their phone numbers. And then, we can know by the end of the meeting, hopefully, that they can show...
Now, we'll move on to the methodology for selecting the full-time city manager. Mr. Zerlik?
Thank you. Again, I was asked to determine a, or advance a methodology to select a recruitment firm for the position of city manager.
I'm sorry, could you start again?
Yes.
I was distracted.
Okay, I was asked to, just to advance a methodology to select a recruitment firm for the full-time position of city manager. This is the very important decision that you have to make. And I included some attachments. The attachments are from a nationally-recognized headhunting firm. I took out their, the name of the firm, because I didn't want to endorse anyone. But essentially, the methodology contained therein is pretty much the same with other national headhunting firms. Attachment two is a, was a project scheduled for the recruitment of a manager. And that schedule, I thought, was, could be co-terminous with the schedule that you're going to have. This is a real-time, real-life project schedule for another city manager in another community. And they started May first, telling this recruitment executive to go, if you will. By April, by August 16th, they would have an employment agreement in place for the manager. And then, you figure about thirty days after that, because if that manager is gainfully employed in another municipality, he or she should give at least a thirty-day notice. So, you would, you'd be talking about sometime in September, if we authorized a firm to proceed... So you would, you'd be talking about sometime in September if we authorized a firm to proceed to select a, a city manager. And the way that could work is that we don't need a formal resolution. We just get the consensus, if you will, tonight. And I would ask Peggy to solicit some quotations from national headhunting firms as well as the Michigan Municipal League to see what they, what they would provide us. We'd come back with no recommendation because that is your choice to, to make that decision. We would just take care of the, the mechanics of soliciting firms to give a proposal to the mayor and council. That choice would then be yours. In addition, yesterday I received a, a letter from Mr. Frank Gersonnecker, who's the former manager at Troy, and Mr. Gersonnecker is in, in the audience. And subsequent to his retirement, Troy, he worked as an executive search consultant for the Michigan Municipal League and placed almost 50 or over 50 city managers in Michigan. And his letter is self-explanatory. If you have any questions about Mr. Gersonnecker's letter, I think you should talk to Mr. Gersonnecker directly and he'll be happy to answer any questions that you make.
Do we have any documentation from the last time the city went through this process that we can review and, and get a, a background and a kind of information?
Mayor, yes, absolutely. We do have documentation. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. We did have a search firm that, that handled the selection process last year. One of the things that certainly council should be mindful of is that there is only, there are only, according to the charter, the manager's position has to be filled within 120 days. So time is certainly of the essence. This has to be done quickly and any proposals would be contingent upon the manager starting within 120 days. So that's, that's critical.
Does that start May 18th?
That, that would start, yeah, your interim city manager, when you make a, a resolution for that, they'll have an ending time and then it would be from the date that the interim city manager's appointment starts.
The day he starts?
Yes, so May 18th at whatever time, noon or whatever time is selected.
Councilman Fleming?
I think the point is there, there might be some advantage to having some overlap with the interim here, but basically the clock starts when the, I understand, existing city manager leaves, the resignation is effective, I think, May 18th. If there was some overlap, that's, he was the interim, I just wanted to clarify that.
So we have till August 18th, basically, if he starts on the 18th or next?
I haven't done that yet, well, that's about right, yeah.
October, September. September.
It's 120 days.
Okay, September. You don't worry.
Councilman Tease, Fleming, I'm sorry.
Just as part of the, the process, having gone through this before, it takes a lot of internal work as well and coordination liaison outside this council to do this. It takes a lot of work from the human resource director. In the past, I know we've used our city attorney to help coordinate and now we've got Mr. Gersonnecker who's willing to help. And I think we should consider all, all sources. I don't know exactly what role each will play, but I know in the last search that we had that our city attorney was very heavily involved. Laurie was very heavily involved and helping coordinate that along with Peggy Sears. So I don't think we want to put this on one person, you know, totally, but I would like to suggest at this point that, that we have our city attorney act as the liaison, internal liaison, but using whatever resources, you know, and she's going to, she can't do it all by herself, but there's a lot to do here. Certainly, human resources is involved and if needed, Mr. Gersonnecker is. That would be my suggestion as far as the part of, we're in the methodology now here that we, Laurie's been through this, I think, twice. I've been through it twice, you've been through it twice as well. I know Peggy Sears has been through it many times as well, as well, but I'd like, if we got to put some person in charge of the internal liaison, I'm, I'm suggesting that we have Laurie do that, to help coordinate.
I would agree with that. Council, Councilman Slade?
I mean, from my perspective, I always kind of thought that was the human resources director's position, so I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want them not to be the, I, I don't know what the roles were last time, but I would just think that the human resources director generally, I think, in most firms is the lead on that with the assistance certainly of the law enforcement. And, I mean, I'm honored actually today to, to have Mr. Gersonnecker in, in here with us. He, he brings with him the respect for forever that I can remember of Troy. And I think when somebody's offering to do something for basically free, that other people charge $20,000 to $30,000 for, I think we would be remiss not, not to jump at that. But I know we're talking about the methodology tonight and I would certainly like to give the opportunity to Mr. Gersonnecker tonight to, to tell us a little bit about what he could do as soon as he's here tonight, if we can get to that point. But for me, I, I always thought the human resources director should be the point. It just makes sense to me. And I know that Laurie has a full plate, a very full plate now, and I think, I think the human resources director would certainly work in tandem with, with the city attorney. But I just think from my perspective, it should be the human resources director as the point.
Jimmy Boom, could you explain to us what your role was the last time the process was used?
Yeah, I, I was asked to be the liaison last time and I think the reason for that was because I was the other direct appoint of council. And so I think that, that is the reason why I was asked to do that. We did, there was a search firm that, that was hired and certainly a lot of, there was a lot of coordination with the human resources department and the purchasing department. Actually, purchasing and human resources had provided the names of the search firms for council and then they'd selected it. And then at that point in time, I was the liaison, the appointed liaison with the search firm that was, that was chosen.
Councilman Tease?
As one of our two direct reports and now the one direct report, I, it would be my preference to have Laurie serve as liaison and certainly the rest of the staff and the HR department and so forth will be working in concert. And so I, I think that makes sense, just there are only two people that are directly accountable to the, to the council and we're down to one in a couple of weeks. So that's kind of where my head's at.
Do we have a selection process that we used last time? So we're not starting with a clean sheet of paper?
Well, you relied, you relied on the proposals that were submitted to us and very similar to the process that's set forth in, in the proposal that you have. There were certain things that council at that point in time wanted to have happen. They wanted a public input session. So we did do a public input session where all of the candidates went over and, and kind of like a public forum that was done last time. So a lot of that, it depends on what the proposals are and again, time is, is of the essence.
Councilman Fleming?
Unless someone else has a comment. The process worked well last time. Unfortunately, at the end, the council could not agree on the candidate, you know, that was brought forth by the, by the search firm. But they did a very thorough job and brought some very good candidates. But it was consensus of the council at that time that our acting city manager was the best fit, so that's the way we went. But the process worked and brought some very good candidates. Laurie's had experience with that and I agree as the direct report to the council that she's coordinated that before and I'd like to see that happen again. So we need to get that out of the way and sort of just concur, but certainly she's not doing it on, on her own. That process has worked.
Councilman Slade?
I'll go along with the consensus. I, I can understand why a direct report would be a logical person to, to be the liaison with council, but I would just hope that a human resources, HR director would be probably the one that does most of the work. And if I could, would it be appropriate to, to have Mr. Gersonnecker speak to this council just briefly about what he could provide to save the city $30,000?
Are you going to make the presentation?
I mean, I understand that there, there would be expenses, but not, maybe, maybe if you could just explain to us what you could do for us, I would be ready.
First of all, thank you very much and I'm happy to see you make decisions regarding the interim and I congratulate you on that and moving that process along. The 120-day period is right on, but it's the minimum required. And I, what I wanted you to know is I have great flexibility to do whatever you want me to do. If you hire a, a search firm, I'll be happy to examine their proposal with you, give you suggestions, see how you might want to change that and make it fit for you. I'll be happy to, I have a little bit of cold going on here. I'll be happy to monitor that firm if you wish. And on the other hand, if you choose to do this on your own, I can take you through a procedure and process. It'll be a lot of work for me and probably Laurie and Peggy, but let me just start by saying the reason I'm suggesting this is that I have not volunteered anything for this community and a lot of people do. And I have these guilt pains that I really do something once in a while. And so, and I do have experience. I helped, now some of these are repeats, John. I had some repeated cities who, during that tenure period where they have turnover in the manager's post and they say, come back again. And I tell them, look, calling me is like calling the undertaker. You just don't, you want to retain these people. Well, anyway, so I would, if you want to go that way, there will be some expense involved for your own expenses and copying, advertising and so forth. But the process involves probably four to five significant leadings by the council. And we'll want to develop, first step, in my opinion, is to get to know what you expect. And then I give worksheets. We all sit down, we work on worksheets and we come up to a consensus on many traits and so forth. Then I develop a profile, a community. What I'm really going to do is put out an announcement and I'll send that announcement to the presidents of management associations around the Great Lakes, the five Midwest states that are in a regional, to all of the regions in Michigan, there are 13 regions of manager groups in Michigan and of course through whomever else. And, and also there are some people who may call and, and be interested. I served on the International City Management Association Board. I still have people out there who are aware of me. Past president of the ICMA was Bill Baldry, over in, it was on West Side State. He was a president while he was the city manager of Guanajuato. And he does the recruiting for the Michigan Municipal League. He could bring a lot of presence to the position. Well, anyway, after we get that done, we do the, the biggest time consumer is getting the ads published, meeting the ad schedule, and secondly, getting time for people to get to respond to it and get their resumes back. The rest of it, we can control pretty well and move right along. We could do our own resume screening, your own examinations, whittle it down if you wish. We could do background checks. I usually hire an outside firm that's about $100 a pop to do that. And then I do my own background. I check, I call people with whom they've worked. I call people, I do a 360, person for whom they work, the mayor or the city council. I'll talk with a lateral person, usually a city attorney, and I'll talk with a subordinate official, trying to profile this person that's good, how they do their work. Then we all, put all this together and we bring it to you and we help you through a process of selection. And, and finally, we get ready for interviews. Your interview examination, I do all about a battery of somewhere around 150 to 180 questions based on my municipal experience. We whittle that down to about 60 or 70. Each member of the council has a battery of questions so that you develop some contact and some connection with the candidate. And then finally, you, you make the appointment. Pretty simple. I could give you all of this in writing. I've done this a lot of times. I'll answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the councilman? One of you.
When you've done this, Mr. Gersonnecker, did you do this with your own firm? Were you working with a major national firm when you were doing this? I worked as a contract consultant for the Michigan Municipal League. The Michigan Municipal League did all the advertising, used the league logo and the city logo on all of our announcements and it was a partnership with the league. They indemnified me thankfully, just sometimes it's difficult to do it. Any other questions?
Councilman Slade?
I know there will be some expenses, but can you, can you tell us ballpark-wise?
Now, my, here are going to be the significant expenses. The advertising, bring people to town, you're going to house them, right? You've got to pay some transportation for them. I think expenses would be, I feel totally confident in saying they'll be less than $5,000.
And you wouldn't charge the city anything for your, your time?
No. Please know that when I did this, my mailbox got all of the resumes. I did all of the, all of the processing and you have to keep these, once you start this, you have to march to the end because the good candidates are going to be picked off first and they're out there looking, right? And if you have delays in the process, the good ones are going to get picked off. And I've had that happen really. You get, if you have delays, you get down to the end and you say, all right, what do we have here? And sometimes you say, well, let's start all over.
When you were with the M and L, obviously you had access to databases and many times, I think we, headhunters specifically go out and see if there are interested parties. You have that ability to, to go out and seek as well as have. You have that ability to go out and seek as well as have those who want to seek.
Yes, to this extent. I would be in contact with people at the league and people in city management and those who are doing recruiting for the league. There are about four or five people who do this and find out who they have. Of course, they're not going to give me... Once you get these candidates, you want to protect them so that somebody else doesn't steal off from you. But we have enough working camaraderie along the group that they would share. And I would then make sure to target those people with the announcement and a personal letter.
May I put them to pause?
I got a question more so about the administrative aspect. Obviously, from the materials that we received that kind of just gave us broad process explanation, and it sounded much like what you described, the different steps. And I think each of those steps has value, and I think it would be important for us to do either what was here or pretty much what you had given us in terms of the process. I felt like that was a solid process for us. But administratively, it seemed like it could be a lot of work, especially if you're processing an information packet that we're giving out to candidates so they can find out more about the city. If we're not going to do an application, probably we'll do resumes. But then taking all the data that you're receiving from the referrals and compiling it and then getting us all the materials, to me, that sounds like administratively a lot of work. Is that something that you would foresee being able to work with the city staff to handle that administrative component? Or is that generally something you think you would take on as well? And I'm not saying you have to. I'm just... I want to figure out the best way to do it because I'm kind of a detail person, and I think that it would be great for us to have all of that information. But I don't know administratively if it's something that you would include based on the fact that you're doing this free.
Here's what I view of this. I would propose that the resumes come to the city and probably the city clerk is through the office of record for your community. Once those resumes go to the clerk's office, they are then in a formal status with the city. And then I would expect to receive a copy. We need to copy those. That's one administrative. Examining and reviewing them, I would do. I would also expect the HR director to look at them from her standpoint. Then the... And what I'm going to do is we're going to develop your ideal city manager. And I'm going to use that as a silhouette to hold these resumes up against. And I would ask Peggy to do the same thing so that... And you'll get that same opportunity, obviously. But if you get... And boy, it would be nice to get 30 or 40. We used to get hundreds. But if we could get 30 or 40, then we probably want to winnow that down to 10 for if you want to look through 10. All of them would be available for you to look through if you want to. And all this administrative thing, I would be happy to work that, but also share it with your personnel, your HR director, just to make sure that I don't miss something. And developing the profile, I would work with them and with your community affairs director to pull together those key illustrations of the strength of this community, embody them in the announcement. I wouldn't want... I used to prepare all of that, publish all of that. I would expect that to be done here. Because I think you'd do a better job than I would.
May Frank sit down, too?
Sure, of course.
I'm okay. Thank you.
David, please.
Some of the comparisons, as I was reading through the process from the recruiting firms that were recommended, said that they would bring us five, six, seven under, at least single-digit applicants, and then we would go through the interview process. And that seems to be a pretty manageable number of individuals to look at. But it also begs the question, of those in whatever organization we've hired to do this, of those that weren't accepted, you know, how do they fit into Detroit? You know, is there somebody that may have been better that we would have liked better just didn't end up in that final 10? And to your point, you know, you have somewhat vested interest here in Troy, and you know what we're looking for. You know, I think that makes a lot of sense to have somebody kind of look at 40, 50, 60 of them, knowing, you know, what we need as a community. Where I don't think we're going to be capable of eyeballing 60 applications to try to figure out what's best for us.
Okay. Good. Okay. Very good. Yeah. My thought process prior to seeing your proposal, so I'd process this in my mind, my preference. I have a pet peeve about only looking at public sector candidates. The last time I went through this, I requested that we have people that have time in the private sector as well. I suspect when you're looking at strictly MML database, that's mostly going to be public sector. I was thinking process would be used... A major national firm, you gave us an example of one, and the process, I liked what they were going through. And they specifically talked about the private sector. Some of their candidates asked that. So I would really like to see that component basically, and think there could still be a role for you in that, Mr. Gursenekker, because you're taking on a lot here the way you just described it. Personally, I would like to see a major national firm doing this search, not only looking at the public sector but at private sector. And if you want to narrow it even more and give some guidelines, maybe this firm places no more than 60% of their candidates at place in the public sector, at least 40% in the private. Otherwise, what you get is you get people that are in the private sector that don't even bother applying. So I'm wondering, if I had my wish and my desire, that's what would be, a major national firm. I think you could add value to that. But my question for you would be, if we chose, if this council chose to go with a major national firm who put an emphasis not only public sector but private sector, and looking at a firm that's had a lot of experience in both, how would you see your role in that? And how do you think that national firm would view you? Because I think you can add a lot of value, and you can help us in this process. But how would you view your role working alongside this council with a national firm?
Well, excuse me. Here's... Let me look at my role as this. First of all, I would work with you to examine their proposal.
Yes.
To make sure that... Excuse me. The elements that are necessary are being touched upon.
Yes.
Secondly, an important thing that I think you must be concerned with is watch that they don't present a face to you who is very presentable and very experienced. And then, when the person comes up to do the work, it's a junior member of the firm. That frequently happens. And so, and I would be... I would work with you as an advisor, if you wish. To examine that and counsel you as to these issues. Now, also, another sector you want to think about is... And I don't have any problem looking at the private sector. In fact, some communities insisted we place ads in private sector journals to encourage private sector applicants. Another source is the military. It is surprising. I've had some lieutenant commanders come out of the military and make excellent city managers. Air Force base commanders, they command, especially in the northern states, they run a whole city. They have snow removal, they have water treatment in their bases, they have sewage treatment. Everything a city does goes on in a military base. So I've had excellent people come out of those, and they are not authoritarian, as some would think. They can be if they must be. But... And I've had some... In fact, I had one community hire a lieutenant commander. He said he was going off to bigger things, and he went away, went to another community and said, "Hmm, this doesn't look like it's what I thought it was." In the meantime, he hired another person who didn't work out and had to sack that person. The lieutenant commander came back. He's been there, I don't know, 20 years now, and loves it. So that's just an example. You'll find people coming out of the military that are great resources.
Mr. Gursenekker, being as we are probably all going to be interested in having some community liaison, would you be interested in possibly heading a community group of individuals that are actively involved in the process?
Mayor, I have the honor to do that, and I think that's very important. In one community, I worked with a community group of 22 community leaders who went through the whole vetting process and presented to the city council, I think about 10 people. And they then took it with me. We took that down to five for interviews. It was a delightful experience to work with. It took a lot more meetings, and I was there in that community a lot more frequently, but and the fee was the same. So...
Well, this is an important task that we're undertaking, so I think it would be a good idea to have a group of community leaders join you in a liaison group to help in the process.
Just... And if you do, I have nothing against private sector firms. And this is an important decision to make, as you all know, and that's why I'm here. I really feel like I haven't done enough volunteer work for the community, so the least I can do is help here.
Are there any other council?
I also had the private sector paragraph highlighted here. And one thing I liked about what this company said is, "While we don't routinely recommend candidates with no experience in government, we've been very successful in finding highly qualified and capable private sector people to bring forward." So I also like that option as well. The military thing, my son was in the military. I've been to the bases, and you're right, they are small communities. So that fits with my thinking as well.
The lieutenant commander that these people hired, he was in charge of the naval installation. I mean, his budget was like a half a billion dollars, and he had tremendous experience.
Are there any other questions? Councilman Slater?
I don't have any other questions, but it just seems to me that I'm not a big proponent that we have to always hire national firms to do things. I think when you have qualified people that have the same experience, sometimes you get a better bang for the buck when you have somebody that knows the city as well as you know the city. So we've used a national search. Peggy, how many times? Three? Three that I'm aware of, and they all got fired. Okay.
Really?
Yes.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I don't think that's the case.
I think more pesky city council members, I could say on a committee.
All I can tell you is our long-term city managers have come from within, I think. But I don't think just because you're a national firm makes you the best. And I certainly appreciate your offer, and your experience certainly speaks for itself.
Another option for you to consider, and I must tell you that I have a... I don't wish to be self-serving here or appear to be, but if you would retain the Michigan Municipal League, I would ask... And their fee is much less than private sector. They base their fee on the salary of the outgoing manager. For a while, we did it on the fee on the final compensation that the incoming manager was to receive. And sometimes I'd be recommending, "I think you're going to have to... You're going to have to come up a little bit." And it appeared to be self-serving because the fee would go up, right? So I said, "No, let's not do that. Let's base it on the outgoing manager's salary." So it's fixed, and that's what they base it on, and plus expenses. And the expenses they'll have, although I don't think exceed the $5,000 that I talked about. Second part of that, one of my graduate school classmates from the Wharton School was Bill Baldridge. And he is much more talented than I. He had a full ride for the first semester. I had to earn my fellowship after the first semester with grades. And he's over at... He is in Muskegon, fully retired.
Were you suggesting, because you think that MML, it would also give you an opportunity to really work in conjunction with them as well?
I would work with whomever you wish to hire, but I would work also with MML. And I would still be the voluntary one. Now, there are some times when I'm going to be out of the community, I am still one of these crazy fly fishermen who goes up north in cold water streams and tries to catch beautiful trout and turn them back loose again.
Don't tell us that. We expect you to be here.
Well, that would be my thinking. Your needs.
Thank you very much. So now, the process is that we examine our choices, and when do we have to make a decision?
I would suggest as soon as possible. And if I recall, I was not here the last time you went through the process, but I heard Mrs. Bloup say that Ms. Sears contacted some consulting firms. Would you still want that to happen? Or would you want... I'm looking for direction at this point. Do national consulting firms contacted in conjunction with the league? Do you want to have a proposal for Mr. Gursenekker as a standalone proposal? I will keep your direction.
You've offered a lot of time and assistance, and thank you very much for doing that. And I think regardless of what direction you end up going, I think there are many aspects that you've offered that you can help with, things like the background checks. Trust but verify. You could trust another firm, but certainly verify. And the interview questions and the community profile and understanding, help us understand what we're looking for, I think is probably something that'd be very useful. I guess the way I kind of see what Councilman Fleming is saying about some sort of balance where they have also done work in the private sector, and I think it's also important that they've done work in the public sector as well. And it can't be a couple-token private sector because you're not going to get the client base that they otherwise would have if they've done some degree of work there. And, you know, foreground terms, national firm or regional firm, I don't know what that would be, but I think we need to find organizations that have placed city managers in a place like this. I don't know if MML's that solution, though. My concern is that we're going to get something that is more... That's right what it says. I think Troy is in a unique spot. We've done a lot of innovative things, and I think that we need to have people that are looking to turn over a stone and find different ideas and... Troy's in a unique spot. We've done a lot of innovative things. And I think that we need to have people that are looking to turn over a stone and find different ideas and different ways of handling that. My concern would be at looking at a place where we're only going to see folks from from that viewpoint. I think we could certainly look at MML. Right now, I wouldn't be inclined to go that direction, I guess.
Can I put them together? I think we're kind of talking about qualifications intermixed with just the selection process. So I think when, once we get to a point where we have firms or individuals that are sitting around us with their proposals are and we can see what they have to offer, but I think we're kind of talking about who we might like to see or what some of the experience we would like to have in the candidates. But I think either way, whatever we go with, whether it's a national firm, regional firm, MML, Mr. Gersonnecker, we can give them our criteria and what we want. So if when we sit down and have a conversation about the kind of candidates we would like to see, I think any one of the people that we've kind of tossed around or the firms that we might see are going to have to be willing to take our criteria into consideration. So I don't want us to get bogged down saying, oh, we can't ask MML or we can't just have one person volunteer to do it. I think we kind of just need to see what our options would be, and I'm not hearing a clear cut answer. So if the, the way to get us to the next step would be to get some proposals for some executive search firms, whatever they may be, national, regional, MML, which I would like to see the proposal cost, I think is going to have to be an issue for us. We want to at least deal with something that we think that we can maintain. I think as a rule, MML is probably going to be somewhere in between, someone that's willing to offer their services for free or an executive search firm. So I kind of want to see the spectrum. But I think we probably need to see those proposals before we would really be able to move forward as a group. So if there could be consensus that we need to see a couple of those options with a little bit more specificity, I think that could be direction. We know of what you're willing to offer and I would like to see a proposal if we're going to see other people's, and that's just me, and everyone has to agree to that. But also, I think it's important for us to get some proposals from search, an executive search firm and from MML. And then we can look at those and go forward. Because I think we have to consider costs and we can't really do that right now because we have no idea what what the high end of that might be.
Attorney Bloom, can you handle that for us?
In connection with our excellent staff.
I totally agree that we should look to get several proposals. I don't know how many we need, maybe three, maybe maybe four, but certainly I want to see one from the, it looks a lot at, or more than one that's had experience in the the public as well as private sector. MML, certainly, and thank you for your your recommendation to assist us. Anyway, that's very generous. But we need to get those proposals relatively quickly and take a look at. Now, when you do that, there has to be a request for proposal, and I know that'll be driven by the HR department, but we could look at what we used last time, I think, as a guideline. You know, but basically, what I want to make sure this time that we don't, doesn't fall through the cracks, is that we get firms who have experience in the private sector with at least 40% or more of their placements, active placements being in the private sector and the other can be in the public. So I think we need a mix. And if we don't get that, then I won't be inclined to work with any of them.
While we're doing all this, I think the first thing we have to do is get the selection criteria put down for what we want. You get all the quotes in the world, if you don't know what you want, the quotes really are not all that valuable. So I think while we're waiting for these to come back, we have to sit down and really, you know, what do we want at the end of the day when this is all done? Because that's what they're going to work to. That's what they're going to qualify the candidates to. So I'm not sure how that process gets, that's going to be, that could be a long, very tedious process. You know, there's possibilities of, you may not all agree on something. It's hard to believe, but it's possible.
Attorney Bloom, what is the process that you used last time?
And again, I would defer to Ms. Sears because they did the, they were the ones that obtained them. I do have some documentation from, you know, that I reviewed the proposals, but I know that they were the ones who solicited.
Yeah, I worked with, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
I was with Susan Nurse, being the producing director and developing the proposals. And she assisted in in developing the rating forms, the scoring methodology for city council in determining which would be the successful firm.
Susan, can you provide that to us?
I, and we have to defer to Susan on that.
Yeah, we'll try to fast track this. And this, of course, is up to the governing body. Depends on how much involvement you want in the specification. In my experience, councils don't get that involved in saying, you know, we want this firm or that firm to give a bid. You'll say, give us three public sector executive search firm on a national basis. Give us the Michigan Municipal League and give us Mr. Gersonnecker. And we'll look at those five proposals when they come in. And then you'll decide, and you have Lori and Peggy as your coordinators, you'll decide who you want at that point. At that point, your work really starts because then you'll sit down, as Mr. Gersonnecker said, to profile a new manager. And there'll be a list of criteria that you'll be going through, and that'll help frame the advertisement that the headhunter puts out. You know, you'll let the headhunter know how much, you know, weight you want to give to a private sector experience or a blend or the military, you know. Buzzwords sometimes, you know, must be a city manager for X number of years or that commensurate experience in another sector. I mean, that's all going to be up to you. That's when you really get involved in the nuts and bolts. That's, if we can do it that way, we could, we could be faster than sitting down to say, well, here's our RFP, if your final results are, well, we'll get five people, three national, the league and Frank, we can do that and get back to you as soon as we can.
And will you agree then that we want, or, excuse me?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea personally, but I still, I still want to piggyback on what Jim said about, I don't know why we have to wait to to get those five. I'd like to reach out to Mr. Gersonnecker and set up some kind of a study session for us to discuss the particulars of what we're looking for. So that's ready, that's ready to go when when the selection is made for the firm or whoever does the search for us. Why can't we, why can't we move forward and meet before that about, and be ready to go? So if we could maybe think about some dates, I'd like to see a study session, and I would I would certainly appreciate, knowing one of us that have gone through this at this table. So any help that we could get would be appreciated.
Well, Mrs. Sears, you have some profile criteria, some, some information that you could provide to us in a study session of this sort?
Yes, we have the the checklists that were developed last time you went through the process, yes.
Madam Mayor, I have, I have to go into my computer files, but I have worksheets for elected officials to use in developing their preferred skills, background, experiences, so forth. And my, my practice has been is if I, in advance, every person, every member of the council and staff, and if you want to include department heads with this, I give them the forms in advance. We sit down privately and individually and it's a, there is, there are no round answers. It's a matter of choices. And I cover a gamut of municipal management with that. Then we come together and I give everybody a blank sheet of the same thing. And now we sit down and say, okay, where is it? And that, it's a, it's a, it's a lengthy process, but when we get done, we know what you're looking for and what those attributes and skills and experiences are. And I will, I would do this with department heads and share that with you. And so, and we can do this anytime. And so that if you hire someone and they come on, you've already hit the ground running.
And that was kind of my, my, I was going to follow up on that, is that that does not, you don't have to wait to do that because that is, the search firms, they're going to require the profile to be done by you.
Right.
So certainly I would recommend that the quicker, because that was one of the stumbling, it took us longer last year. You know, so certainly we can provide the the last time's, you know, profile, but it's going to be modified because it's a different council. So, but yeah, I would recommend that 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 can go on simultaneously before you've even had the search firm selected.
Very good.
I agree. Simultaneously, I would think that we should work on both aspects. Attorney Bloom and Mrs. Sears, if you could get the firms for us and with the focus that we would like to see some private sector experience or companies that have placed private sector individual, I think we all agree on that?
Maybe Mael's fine.
I think the five, the firms will do what you're ready. The five suggested would be great for me.
Okay. And Mayor, just as far as the the process, do you want the five firms, do you want the the paperwork regarding the five firms and then have an interview with them? Last time we we scheduled some phone interviews. So I don't know if that's something that you're ready for or if you want to just receive the documentation and then narrow it down to one or two. I'm not sure how you want to.
We have conference call capability.
We do.
So we could have everyone in the room and have these firms on the phone with us? Councilman Tease?
I think we should review it before, take time to do that.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
I think after reviewing all five, we'll be able to narrow it down and.
Maybe two.
Yeah, I don't think we need to review all five on the phone.
I think.
Could we, could we stay on the study session, try and, try and find a date for that because I think we all have busy schedules and if we could just whittle that down, how's next, is next week okay? Get this thing going?
Yep.
I'll have to look at my calendar.
We'll have to do that again that we did last time with the manager's office.
Give a, give a look.
Date next week.
With, with all this recruitment effort, I think we should try to start working through the city attorney's office since we're going to be going through transition and just to keep things. If, if nothing else, then just be the point of contact on this, if that makes sense, because then.
We're scheduling.
For, just, just to keep all the scheduling and processing. I should be leaving as soon.
I will be, Peggy will not.
And if we could just include Mr. Gersonnecker's schedule.
Absolutely.
I think it's great that he's offered to participate in this with us.
Mr. Miller?
For Madam Mayor and members of council, just to keep in the back of your mind, as foundation members of Automation Alley, you have the ability to use their boardroom and their teleconferencing technology.
Awesome.
So just keep that in the back of your mind because that's even better than, you know, telephone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let me make sure you understand, I'm to provide you some profile worksheets.
Yes.
When would you like them and when would you like to schedule a meeting to?
We're all going to try to contact the city attorneys next week with all of our candidates, with about, what, three options maybe that we can whittle down to one?
And we'd like the profiles as soon as possible.
Okay, I'll get those worksheets out to you.
Or the worksheets, excuse me, yes.
And then you can work them over.
Yes.
This is not going to be anything fancy. Pretty mundane, pretty.
And I'd be happy to distribute those.
And then we need to set a date to sit down and.
And I'd be happy to facilitate if you wanted to give me the information and then I can disseminate that to.
If you could provide three days, three alternative dates next week through the city attorney's office that you could make a study session.
And you tell me when you need.
Okay. Is that available, flexible?
Like Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday of next week.
Okay. You think you can get them done by then? Okay.
At least the first draft.
Yeah. Does that conclude the discussion?
Just, just again, that, we do have budget sessions and we're meeting budgets next Monday. If we don't get through everything and answer all the questions, we'll need to schedule another budget session, possibly next week or so, just so that, just so that you know.
You'd rather do that in April than in May, so.
Also, Mr. Shripka and Mr. Culpepper will be here Monday at 6:00.
Very good.
One at 6:00 and one at 6:30 for later.
Thank you.
Call a special meeting on that.
Thank you.
6:00.
Anderson.
If I can just throw it out there, lunchtimes next week off the table, or I know sometimes we've met during the day for.
That would be okay.
Because the next week's a jam for me. I have a small window, but daytime's I'm way more buzzed.
I'm okay.
Okay, so I'll throw it. Or we could go up north fishing.
My camper won't hold out.
So can we move on to public comment now at this point?
I just have one more question, it's really a procedural question. Once we get this all done, obviously, the ideal situation is seven people are going to raise their hands and say, this is the greatest guy since sliced bread.
Yeah.
Or girls.
Girls. If that doesn't happen, and there are some dissenting votes, what is the, is it, is it just a majority vote or is there a rule to?
I can respond to that. That's generally to the city manager applicant. Some city managers would not take a job on a 4-3 vote, some would not take a job on a 5-2 vote. So you'll have to, you'll have to talk to the city manager or the potential manager what they'll require.
Legally, it's only a majority vote.
A majority, but.
I wouldn't count it.
Yeah, right.